We have a couple councilmen drifting back in. I'm going to get a cup of coffee, but we're here to talk this evening about the general funds supported capital improvements plans, or as we always refer to it, the capital improvements plan. I will remind citizens that it's been a long time since we have had a funded capital improvements plan in the city of Pecosa. We've always had a capital improvements plan, and as we continue to try and strengthen the financial positions of the city, instead of taking on the programs one at a time when we have a little bit of money, we're trying to get to a point where we actually have one, we follow it, and that we get some of the bigger projects that we've got, figure out how to fund those, where they fit into the overall financial plan. It's a multiple-year plan. As you can, if you can read, it's kind of an eye chart, I'm sure, on your TV, but we're talking about fiscal years 2019, 20, 21, 22. So, you know, out into the future, and Randy, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I do, I realize that it is very difficult to read what we have on the screen. Members of council, you have in your package, hopefully, a readable version, and for anyone watching at home that might want to go back and look at this, this is posted online with our agenda, so if you, if you're having difficulty reading it, I apologize. Our purpose this evening, well, let me back up. As the mayor referenced, like pretty much every local government in Virginia, we're a government that has a capital improvements plan. It's been a long time since it was a meaningful budget document, but is typically presented, prepared with input from the staff and the school division, presented by me, to the planning commission, who, who looks at it, puts their own touch to it, holds a public hearing, and ultimately makes a recommendation to you. Typically, that recommendation comes in the February timeframe, more or less, and then it comes to you, and is typically adopted around the time of the budget adoption. This year, conscious decision was made to hold up the decision, discussion of the CIP to allow time for the school board and the city council to meet together, talk about the process by which the school board would look at issues relating to school consolidation and, and/or the middle school renovation project. You'll see that actually referenced without a number attached to it as your first, as your first item up there in kind of the light yellow color. So, the school board has begun that process, as you know, following your work session. As the mayor referenced a few minutes ago, at the city council's last meeting, Davenport, our city's financial advisors came in and briefed the city council on essentially, to simplify it, what amount of money we could borrow, and staying within our financial guidelines and the things that sort of guide our AAA credit rating, and they shared with you, depending on how you might do that, what the impact of that would be, meaning, like anything else, if you put something on your, on your personal credit card or your community credit card, you do need to make the payments. So, they talked about that. So, this is the, the third piece, which we hope will provide context to you as you prepare to receive the initial recommendations from the school board later this calendar year. I think it's important that we have all the context together, and so part of that is to refresh your memory and the community's memory on those things that are in the draft capital improvements plan. Again, we didn't, we haven't approved one this year, and given the, the timing of it, we're probably really talking about input for the next iteration of the plan. But these projects that you see here are four of the five years in the CIP draft. The first is the year we're in. You know that, given the, the limited amount of money that we had, the only significant CIP thing that you funded was a school bus, and you used fund balance to do it. At least for those things that are general fund-supported. General fund is, is the general tax dollar, and these projects, as proposed by the departments in the school administration, school board, are funded, are proposed to be funded by either debt that is paid for by the general fund or actually cash from the general fund. The years that they're in are not necessarily the exact years that the departments put forward, because again, the year we're in, year one of this five-year plan, we had very limited resources, so some things got pushed back. I think there are a number of, of things that I, that I hope are meaningful and helpful to you. I tried to color-code it, and again, I realize that you can't read this very, very easily, but blue is equipment replacement, and the orange color, the very dark yellow, is maintenance and repair, and the balance are either new projects or upgrades. And again, not counting the middle school consolidation or middle school renovation, what you see over the next four years is about $14 million of requested projects. Of that $14 million, about three of it is equipment replacement. These are things like fire trucks, these are things like school buses, and these are things like public works, large public works equipment. Additionally, about 5.7 are maintenance and repair projects. The exact projects are, you know, always in flux, and you'll see, for example, a couple up here that are listed as completed. Sometimes we can't wait, and you have always worked with us when we couldn't wait, but as you know, our ability to, to deal with the short-term acute happening-now problem is, is reduced as our fund balance has tightened. But the, the maintenance projects in and of themselves, this superintendent's going to speak to this, but just, I just want to point out one maintenance project, and she'll speak to it, but just that second or first numerical line down, high school roof replacement, that's a $1.3 million, almost $1.4 million project. Roofs on older buildings need to eventually be replaced. HVAC systems need to be replaced. Anne Payne, our building inspector and, and, and general building support person, is going to speak to you about our HVAC system. Systems do wear out. We've been very fortunate through, through a little bit of luck and a lot of work and, and aggressive maintenance when we could afford it, and as Anne said to me earlier today, glue, we've been able to wholesome things together. But that is, those times are, we, we're in extra innings, and eventually, we need to plan to deal with those things, and you'll recall when we did our recent tour of the middle school, there was a portion of which was raining inside the building. These are the kinds of things we talk about when we talk about roofs. And then there are a few things that are listed as new, again, excluding, just for the purposes of this spreadsheet, the school consolidation and/or the middle school renovation. We have a number of new projects. They're small projects, like a proposal to begin to, to set aside a small amount of money for sidewalk expansions, up to a larger project like the public safety building. The, the police department is here to speak about that today. What I tried to do, a few years ago, we went through every project, every piece of equipment, and it got, while informative, it was almost too much information at one time. Since we're not asking you for any decisions today, and today, we're just trying to, to provide context and information, thought it might be more helpful to you to ask four people to speak on a representative series of projects. So, what we've got for you this evening, but I would note, all the department heads are here, so if you've got a specific question about something we haven't highlighted, they're here to answer that question for you tonight. But as I said, Anne Payne will speak to you about the HVAC system in this building. I've asked the superintendent to, to give you a brief in-process update on where we are with the school consolidation conversation and talk about her three roof projects. I've asked the fire chief to come and speak about the fire station, or, excuse me, the fire truck replacement as an example of equipment replacement, and then lastly, as I referenced, the police department is here to talk about the public safety building. We hope that rather than to, to, we're not trying, a council member asked me earlier today whether those four projects necessarily represented my priority, and what I told him was, I think they're all important, but it wasn't an attempt to give you what we thought were the four most important. We wanted to grab four projects for discussion, which were representative of the types of projects that are in your CIP, if that makes sense.
Yeah, that's fine. That's, that's a good strategy, and like I said, if council wants to talk about a specific issue on here, we can, we can certainly do that. But I want to point out that what, just kind of the highlights, what, what do we need to keep in mind? So, it's $14 million here in, in programs, and that does not include the plan to be determined. Is that correct?
That's, that's correct.
Okay. The plan to be determined being the middle school renovation consolidation. So, it's, it's not like any other year, there's, there's not enough money to do it all, right? But it, the question is, we've got to start picking some of this stuff off, and roofs can never wait, and air conditioning systems do fail. So, so with that being said, which, which staff member would you like to start?
If it's okay with council, I'd like to go ahead and ask the superintendent to come up and sit with us and, and provide that update on where the school board is and speak about her roof projects, and I'm sure if you have any other school-related questions, she would be glad to, to take them. If you wouldn't mind sitting next to Mr. Hux.
We'll be happy to do that.
It's easier for the people at home to see you and hear you.
Well, first, just a quick update on where we are in our discussions about school consolidation. At our last board work session, which was televised and was recorded, and we have it online on a school consolidation webpage that you can find, we did provide a large amount of information to the school board, answering some questions that they had prior to that meeting, and also running some scenarios of if we were to consolidate, what are some possibilities of ways that it would look, and what operating costs might we save by doing so. We are, have another meeting next Tuesday, and at that work session, we'll be doing another presentation with information about consolidation. We're going to be running another scenario for the school board. We also, at the last meeting, the school board asked if we could have an architect give us some ballpark estimates of what in addition to the elementary school would cost, depending on the different scenarios that we provided. So, we are still waiting for that information from the architect, and we may have that in time for the next meeting, and if not, we definitely will have it in time for the November meeting. So, we're really at an information gathering and information presenting stage in their decision-making. We encourage the community, so those of you that are watching, to please share your thoughts on consolidation, and please don't hesitate to go to our school consolidation webpage because we have a lot of information there. You can also go through Let's Talk to provide us with suggestions as well, and that's, you can find that all over our website. So, board members are interested in hearing from you, so I just wanted to say that since we do have a television audience. That's the update on where we are with school consolidation, so now, just very quickly, I'll talk about the roof projects that are sitting on the CIP. The primary school, you see actually, it broken into two separate fiscal years. The first one does the majority of the roof, and at the stage that it would be at when we went to repair it according to our CIP, that roof would be 29 years old. The second phase that you see on the CIP is for the metal roof that's over the cafeteria and the gym, in other words, that front part of the building, and at that point, that roof would be 30 years old. So, as the city manager said, with older buildings, we always have to do roof replacements, and the time is coming for the primary school. The other roof replacement that you see on here is for the high school. At the time that we have that first section there, the $1.3 million project, that roof will be 24 years old. You see a much smaller amount, a little bit further out, and that's just to replace some metal roofing that's actually over the back of the high school. Those of you that have been inside it recently, it's over that foyer area that's actually in the very back of the high school. So, it's just a matter of our buildings are aging, as are roofs, and they need to be replaced. Please know, we did have a roof consulting service come and look at those roofs to give us cost estimates, and also to talk about when we absolutely needed to see those repaired. So, that is the update. I'm not going to talk about the middle school roof that you see on here because that really will be dependent on the ultimate decision made in terms of school consolidation and how, if it were to occur, it could impact the middle school project. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions?
I've got one. The high school gym, HVAC.
Yes. Many of you may know that we do not have air conditioning in the gym at the high school, so we have included that in the CIP with the hope of one day being able to air condition the gym. We do currently have volleyball competitions going on in the gym now, and so, and you will say it's a little warm for spectators and players, but you do see that as a recommended project on the CIP, and that the cost is the cost of adding HVAC to that, just that part of the building.
And that's still a, that's a fair, that's a reasonable estimate? Has that been updated?
Yes, actually, we actually updated that last year, so that's a very good estimate at this point.
Okay. All right, anything else?
Thank you. Probably my shortest presentation ever.
Well, we know you always need money. So, all right, so who's next? Yes?
I'd like to ask Anne Payne to come up and speak with us about the, the system that she's holding together with glue.
Hi.
For those of you that don't know, Anne, she is a building inspector, she is a jack of all trades, she was our original junior engineer. I haven't found too many things yet that Anne can't do.
Well, thanks for letting me talk to you guys tonight. As I kind of tell you about our HVAC system, please try to keep in mind, I'm sure you guys at home have had your units fail, like no heat, no cooling, at, you know, horrible times, so try to keep that in mind because that's what we're going through. So, a little history, so our, our units here, they're all original, and they're over 20 years old, just over 20 years old, and they all use R22, which it's been phased out, if you guys don't know, and starting January 1st, 2020, it'll be illegal to manufacture or import it in the U.S., and because of that, it's very expensive. Every time we have to charge our systems, it's about $1,600 just in material, so...
I'm sorry, which refrigerant?
R22. Oh, that's loud. So, anyway, that's something to think of. The, the units are obviously old, and they're failing. Our previous maintenance contract included the refrigerant, which was very expensive, and our contractor did not want to renew, and putting it out to bid, given the age of the equipment and the, you know, how many repairs need to be done, it's very expensive. So, instead of putting that back out to bid, our building department, which is myself and Ken have taken on the responsibility of doing the maintenance on this, and then using the savings, which is about $15,000 a year, to call in contractors as we need for like the emergency issues that come up. The status of the units right now, we have, so we have eight units in the building, two of which control all the heating and cooling for the library. I know that we have received complaints from citizens regarding, you know, the units failing in there, and it is an issue, obviously. And right now, we have the, the units rigged, they each have individual, they have two compressors inside and two fans, and we have it rigged together, there's a jumper, so the entire thing is running every time it kicks on, which is not good for the unit. It puts additional stress, and it, it just makes it wear faster, and it's already in bad shape. So, it's definitely just a temporary fix, and if it were to go down in the library and be irreparable, it'd be a really big deal for our citizens. For the rest of the units, we have six, which are for the rest of the building. One of the units is down, it actually provides the heating and cooling for the DMV, Community Development, and the engineering offices, and that went down earlier this year, right before the summer. So, I bought about $3,500 worth of equipment, just some portable air conditioners like you'd use in a residence, which those have been providing cooling for those offices, and starting for the cooler weather, we'll have to bring in some equipment, you know, for heating as well. Also, I had trained come out and do an independent assessment on that unit and then our others, and they said that unit is irreparable, and our other ones, they definitely recommend replacing and not touching them because more things will break. But anyway, the units are significantly more expensive, obviously, to replace one at a time because they're, a lot of the units, we have one up above this council room, we've got four up above on the second floor, above the finance and city manager's office, and then we have two in our mechanical room. Anyway, they're hard to get to, it's going to take cranes if we replace one at a time as they fail. You've got all of those mobilization and demobilization of equipment and crews, which is just a, a lot more money than if we, you know, can plan to do this at once. So, that's something to think about. Trying to fund this, I know it is a significant expense, we have about $4,000 or $400,000 is what we think it's going to cost. They do have performance contracts, which the Department of Mines, Minerals, and Energies, they oversee them, and I'm talking with them, their contract is, is final at the end of last month, and, and they're working on getting everything into place. I have talked to them about coming in and doing an assessment on our building to see if it's a feasible way to fund this. If it is, that's good because we wouldn't have to, you know, pay everything upfront, and it's a guaranteed savings, so that the savings from our old, you know, inefficient equipment would be, would cover the cost of the new stuff. So, that's a possibility, it's not a guarantee. I definitely do encourage you to fund this item in case that doesn't pull through. So, I think that's everything. If you guys have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Questions? I've got, I've got a couple. So, what's the, what's the lead time to mobilize to do this type of change-out?
So, if we did this on our own, without trying to do the performance contractor, I would want to bring in an engineering company to do an assessment of the facility and the equipment and to make recommendations. There are different things you can do other than replacing the entire unit, like the compressors on the roof and the air handlers. There are projects where you can just change out the compressors and then modify our existing air handlers for a new refrigerant, so, you know, that's a possibility, or it could be that it's a better option to just replace everything. So, I would want to have someone that specializes in this come out and do an assessment, which that would probably, I mean, I'm assuming following our financial, you know, like policies that we would have to put that out to bid. So, I'm thinking realistically, probably about four months between bidding, awarding, and then getting it done, and then after that, you know, it's hire a contractor, you know, put that out to bid, that whole process. So, it'd probably be like a year and a half if we did it on our own. Speaking with the Department of Mines, Minerals, and Energies, they estimated about eight months from start to finish working through them. I'd say a year because contractors are never on time. So, that process, the benefit of working with them is, if it does work out and it is feasible for us to do, they already have all the contracts written, it's already been through the competitive bid process, so we don't have to do that work, which is a huge advantage, and which is why I'm really hoping we can go that route.
Okay. And what would, if, let's say that we didn't, you know, not, not piece it back together, not change out compressors, what's the, what's the duration that you could expect? Is it another, this one's 24 years old, will we get 24 years out of the newest systems?
Pretty much, yeah. About 20 to 25 is, is the average.
Okay.
If I could, Mr. Mayor, just to amplify one of the points that Anne was making, in case you, it wasn't clear what this performance contracting is, it is an option available, it's one of the things that you get on a pretty short list of where the state is actually extremely helpful. The Department of Mines, Minerals, and Energy has contracts for firms that, when one, when I last dealt with this, there were about five firms, and what they do is they come in, they do an assessment of your building, and if they can upgrade your, your HVAC, your toilets, your sinks, all throughout your building, if they can save you enough money in terms of energy savings and maintenance savings, they can essentially bring it to you and pay for it with those savings. I know it seems too good to be true. There is a very detailed state vetting process, states very helpful. We actually did this at the jail, and we saved considerable money at the jail. In fact, we saved beyond the savings targets every year to the point that, that we're very well pleased with it. Now, jails are different than this building, scale's different, but I commend Anne for looking because this is something that could be helpful to us, not just here, but it may have application for other things that we might do. It's a good way to get into it on something that's important and learn from it.
Agree. Do you need anything special from us to, to go forth, forth to Mines, Minerals, and Energy and get this done?
No, actually, they're, they, so their process, just to give you a little quick, quick blurb on that, is they get these contractors, everybody submits who wants to be part of this contract. They go through a vetting process, and then once DME approves them, they're on the list, and usually, it's about 25 contractors. As soon as they do that, which they're saying mid-October, it's been sketchy with their date, so let's call it November, at that point, I'll be able to say, look, I want you to come in and do an assessment, and there's no, like, there's no cost to the city, there's no, we have to move forward with this, nothing. And at that time, of those 25 pre-approved contractors, they will come in, do an assessment of the buildings, I was going to give them a selection of buildings I want them to look at, and then tell us, is this feasible or not? And if it's feasible, at that time, they'll give us a proposal to move forward, and then after that, there are potential costs. So, at that time, I think I would bring it to you guys and say, you know, look, it's feasible, we would like to move forward with this, is it something that you're okay with?
Okay.
Does that sound good?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely. I think we need to move along with them post-haste, and I'm not saying that that's where we need to park all our eggs in that one basket, because I, I clearly understand that we may not qualify for it, but we might.
Yeah.
So, we need to go ahead and do that, and keep Plan B in our, you know, high second.
Yeah.
Okay, but thanks.
Thanks.
Yeah, this building serves lots of the general public, more so probably than, than other buildings, you talk about the library and all the offices, we have people coming in and out of it.
Yep.
We're going to have, we're definitely going to have to deal with it one way or the other, and, and we're going to see if this is a cost-effective way to use energy savings to pay for some or all of it. If not, the need's still there, we're just trying to find a way to...
Well, I just, you know, I personally think we need to move before the next summer, so one way or the other, so we need to be sort of lined up there, because we did go out this summer, and I will tell you that my, my opinion of moving portable air conditioners and portable heaters just means our, our risk of fires and other things go up, so I would like to see us do what we need to do on the city hall. All right, so who's the next department head?
The, I think if it's all right, I'll go ahead and ask Chief Holloway to come up and talk now, because I think in terms of council questions, the most questions will likely come from the last presentation, so. Chief Holloway, I've asked him to come up and speak with us about the replacement of engine 102, which you will recall is an FY19 recommended project.
As the chief's getting set, this thing, general conversation applies to all those blue items up there. This just happens to be the fire version of it.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. When I refer to this engine, initially, we called it engine 102. It's been since renamed engine 11, so if you hear me refer to it as that, trying to keep the confusion down.
Which truck is it? Just, hmm? Which truck is it?
It's the reserve unit that we have, it's the 1990 Grumman.
All right, all right, I know which one you're talking about.
Right, and that one...
Smaller, it's a, it's a little, it's not your full-size...
Oh, it's, it's, it's a huge piece of equipment, probably one of the biggest ones that we have next to the ladder truck. It was, the way they were building them at that time, it, it's built like a bus in the front. So, that piece of equipment is strictly a reserved piece of equipment, but the piece of equipment that we're proposing will not be just a reserved piece. We set up a matrix of how we respond to equipment, and that's loaded into CAD, so dependent upon how the call comes in, determines what piece of equipment responds. So, this piece of equipment that we're proposing may be the first run unit that goes out on a call... a call and another piece of equipment will be, will set in reserve. So, it's not a dedicated reserve piece. And, you know, like I said before, it, it seems like it wasn't that long ago when we were taking trips to Roanoke to watch this piece of equipment, the progress of it being built, but it was nineteen ninety, so it's, it's approaching thirty years old. It has some major issues. If y'all remember back during Isabel, we used it down on Ren's Road and someone took a picture of it with water up to the headlights. Well, with that comes its own problems and it has had a host of electrical problems since then. We've had to have an engine rebuild. We lost a cylinder during a pump test. And to date, I think we have spent somewhere in the neighborhood of about, I think, ninety, ninety-some thousand, ninety-some thousand dollars on repairs for that particular piece of equipment, ninety-four thousand, nine hundred and eighty-five dollars. And being old naturally, the unit doesn't have the airbags or shoulder harnesses or any anti-lock brakes. Lighting is not up to standard and has no AC that, which we use for rehab for our firefighters. It's a thousand GPM pump, it has no foam tank and it holds seven hundred and fifty gallons of water. And also, when we talk about a reserve, I, I keep saying a reserve piece of equipment, that's a requirement of ISO that we at least have a reserve piece of equipment. So, that's the reason why I'm saying we'll have it like a floating reserve instead of a dedicated reserve. Our current two frontline engines have fifteen hundred GPM pumps. They each hold five hundred gallons of water. They have a foam tank and foam pump. The truck that we're proposing in the CIP is a mini pumper or a quick attack pumper. It has, it will have a fifteen hundred GPM pump, it'll hold five hundred gallons of water and it'll have a high-pressure European phone system. This is a marvelous thing to watch. It has great penetration and you have very little chance of having a rekindle when you, when you use that system. This pumper will be built on either a Ford F-500 or GM forty-five hundred four-door chassis and it will meet NFA standards for structural firefighting piece of equipment and will offer the following advantages. It'll be lighter, shorter and more narrow than any unit that we have so far. It's a multi-functional piece of equipment. It'll serve as a pumper, a rescue, an off-road four-wheel drive vehicle and a brush unit. My, my envision for this one is to have it to be able to pump as it rolls, which will be a good benefit in a brush fire situation. It'll be more accessible in tight areas, including tight lanes. The cab, engine and transmission chassis parts will be standard Ford or GM with lower cost for repairs compared to a...
Special made, thanks.
A special-made pumper, right. All other parts used will be commercially available, tires will be cheaper and it will have all the required driver and operator safety equipment. And, once we, once we were to decide we were gonna purchase a piece of equipment like that, it would take approximately eight and a half to ten and three-quarter months.
And the life expectancy of it?
Life expectancy, approximately twenty-five years.
Okay.
Ready to go work to the police department?
Yep. Understand. Thanks.
Greg, are you making the presentation?
Yes, sir.
We have Lieutenant Dever, who's gonna make the presentation and I think then Chief Bohm will have an additional comment or two about the public safety building.
Lieutenant, nice to see you, sir.
Good evening. So, as you can see from the graph, the public safety building is one of the most costly items on there, but you have to consider that this new public safety building will not be just a police department, but it'll also house the entire police department, the fire administration and a new emergency operations center for the city. So, it'd be a multi-use structure. The new building will be designed and constructed specifically as a secure facility to house all those needs and it will be constructed out of a flood zone, which is important 'cause the current police department and fire administration building, both are in flood zones and are not accessible during some storms that we've had in the past. The new building would also have adequate space for all current staff in those three departments as well as for future staff. Currently, the fire administration building as well as the police department don't have adequate space, office space or storage space for necessary equipment and personnel. It would also have new technology and equipment for processing evidence and training rooms to meet standards for the Department of Criminal Justice Services for training police officers that we currently don't meet. As a result, we have to send all of our officers out of the city to get mandatory training. If we could meet the standards, then we could do a lot more in-house training, which would save an overtime and other costs to the city. The new building would meet all the current American with Disability Acts, offering adequate public restrooms and facilities to individuals. Parts of the police department as well as the fire administration building are on second floors, so there's no elevators in that building for people to access those facilities currently. Both the police department and the current fire administration building are in aging buildings. The current police department is at least seventy years old and has had five renovations since nineteen eighty-three. The fire administration building is in a building that is about forty years old and as I stated earlier, both of them are in flood zones. And due to that, they're restricted in how much additions we can do to the buildings to increase the size and office spaces needed for both agencies as well as a new EOC. They both need various stages of improvements. As we talk about roofs, the current police department's roof is over twenty years old and probably need to be replaced in the next few years, much like some of the other buildings in the city. Public safety buildings are unique and have unique needs that are not in regular office building constructions. So, that's one of the reasons for the cost associated with that. They're gonna need special areas such as property and evidence rooms to secure evidence, areas to secure weapons and ammunition, locker rooms and lavatories for officers to be able to process items that may need it as well as to change uniforms or other equipment due to storms or other such needs. The current police department is approximately forty-eight hundred square feet and the offices in the police department are small. Most of the supervisors share an office, there's very few people that have their own offices. So, that's one of the needs that would be addressed in this new public safety building. Another issue is the holding area in the current police department is substandard and it does not allow, allowed to have an adult and a juvenile to be held at the same time. As a result, manpower is needed to house a juvenile in a different part of the building with an officer staying with them, whereas this would be addressed in a new public safety building as well. Also, state and federal occupational safety does not allow for the processing of evidence and bodily fluid or the cleaning of weapons and servicing of weapons due to different regulations that we can't meet in our current facility. A new facility would have more space, it would have the needs that are needed by all three agencies, allow the EOC to have the type of equipment and size that it needs to have the personnel during a storm instead of in the small conference room instead of the City Hall building that is currently located. And we are also looking at a community room that could be used for community events, training sessions or any other type of event that would be needed by the city. All being built in a location not in a flood zone. So, it could be accessible at any time, no matter the weather.
Does it, you know, does this cost that's on here is four point three, I can't remember?
It's about four point five million.
Does that include land acquisition?
That does not include the land acquisition at this time.
And that is, that is just a very estimated...
Yes, that isn't...
So, it's not a, it's not a refined estimate?
No, sir, and that's the reason why you see the fifty thousand dollars up there for the needs assessment. Conducting the needs assessment's gonna give us an idea of the scope of the project and what such a building would cost and how, and what issues, what particular things would need to be included in that building to meet the needs of the police department. So, we'd have a much better idea of the cost and what the size would need to be once the needs assessment's done. I think that'll be a critical part of the planning process.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions on this?
I have a question just that I think other people might be thinking is if we're doing this school consolidation and we're gonna end up with a building that's not used regardless of which one it is, would it be possible to modify that building for this use rather than build a home?
That's an excellent question and we kinda went through that when we built the new elementary school too, about the pre-existing building. As Greg pointed out when he was speaking, he talked about the, the needs of a public safety building generally are not reflected in the design and the construction of existing office spaces, particularly when it comes to security, when it comes to the need to be able to process evidence, store weapons and, and all of the other protections that would need to be in there. So, that, that makes your, your cost of renovating an existing building almost as expensive as it would be to design and build a new building. It, and again, but I think that your question is a good one and I think the needs assessment also helped answer that question. But I think what you'll find is that the design of a public safety building, particularly the police side, administration can be adapted, but, but certainly the training area, we have specific lighting requirements, specific size requirements that the Department of Criminal Justice Services puts on us in order to hold a training class that they will certify as a class that officers can get credit for. And of course, each officer's required to get forty hours of credited training every two years to maintain their certification. So, currently, to get that, we have to send them out to other places, even though we have certified instructors in the building. So, I mean, it's an excellent question, but I, but I do, that's why, another reason why I think the needs assessment is critical, to make that very clear.
And do we have an idea of where we, you would ideally want that located? Has that been thought about?
City manager, I've kicked that around several times. I, I wouldn't, I don't think I would step out and offer a location as an idea. I think that if we get to the point where we do the needs assessment, having a better idea of how many square feet we need is gonna indicate what size of property we need. So, I think that discussion probably better comes after the needs assessments conducted.
I would agree with that.
Okay. Anything else, General? Okay. All right, thank y'all. I know that's, that's your four, is that right? I'd like to hear from Public Works, you've got a million dollars' worth of stuff on here.
Way more than a million.
Yeah, I had a question about that too.
Yeah, I wanna hear from Public Works. Plus, he came and he wore a tie, you know, so always like, whenever, whenever Tom wears a tie, I like to let him talk. How you doing, buddy? Good. All right, not to put you on the spot too much, but, you know, and I think we went through this probably a little over a year ago, but dump trucks are how old now?
Okay, we've got, we've got one that's twenty years old right now. The next one is seventeen years old. And then, we've got a fifteen-year-old and a twelve-year-old.
Okay. And your loader?
The loader's a nineteen ninety model.
That's still, yeah, that's right. You pushed snow with it last year, okay?
Apparently, the city had some money in nineteen ninety.
Nineteen ninety.
Because a lot of our stuff has origins back to that, that period of time.
Okay.
Is the dump truck total price of six, six hundred and sixty-five thousand, is that for three trucks?
Ask that one more time, Karen.
Total number.
Yeah, it's, it's multiple years.
I think the price is for two of them.
So, they're like three hundred and some odd thousand a piece nowadays?
No, no, no. Okay, see, I don't have this. I'll bring it right back to you. Yeah, it's, it's, yeah, it's minimum of three of them.
Okay. So, that's three across the years. And you have one that's nineteen, did you say nineteen?
Yeah, I got one, I got one that's twenty years old.
Okay, all right. The loader's nineteen ninety, got that, the grader?
Yeah, the, the, let me see, let me find it here.
And the dozer?
Yeah, excuse me, one second. You know, the dozer is actually nineteen years old and the Leboy grader's twenty years old. So, they're, they're all getting up there, you know, especially, you know, the, you know, the dump, dump trucks is what we use to clear, you know, the streets for...
Right.
...snow removal. And that's, that's something that's, you know, eventually is gonna be critical because, you know, last year I had issues with them during the snowstorm and when you've only got, you know, two of them that actually have sand spreaders on, when one of those goes down, we're in a, we're in a bind, so...
Gotcha. Okay.
And I know it's gonna be tough, you know, I know that. We'll do what we gotta do.
I understand, but I, I just wanna think big picture when we're talking about this stuff.
You know, also, one critical, you know, item that we can't let go too long is, is debris truck. You know, that's something, you know, that we, you know, that's, I know it's down the road, but that's something, you know, with the convenience site going...
Okay, that's not, and that's, that's paid for out of the...
Yeah, it's different.
Solid waste fund, so it wouldn't be in here.
Right.
Okay. All right. So, did we hit all the things that are on, on your list? Because you've got some, you've got some others. You got like F, F three fifty pickup, you got a excavator, but which, which are your heaviest hitters? The dump truck, I think, is one.
Well, the dump truck is something we're definitely gonna need, you know. I mean, it's without a doubt, you're gonna, we're gonna have to get to one of those within the next few years.
Yep.
I just had a quick question, just 'cause I'm a newbie at this. So, I understand what the dump trucks and the loader is for, but normally, like the graders, the dozer, excavators, those are more like, I'm not a construction person, but more for construction, building roads kind of stuff, so...
The motor grader...
If you could just like explain what those are used for.
Sure. The motor grader is actually used for when we do paving. We, of course, it's construction, like you say, we cut the road shoulders with it. But also, during snowstorms, I, I actually run it myself a lot on the streets, pushing snow. It's a critical piece of equipment for snow removal for, for the city, because...
And it does the, it does the shoulders where you're putting the gravel down after paving and all that sort of stuff?
Plus, it's got a front bucket on it that if my loader goes down when we're loading sand and salt, that's another piece of equipment that I can load the trucks with when they come in for sand and salt because my backhoe, the only other thing with a bucket on it, is actually going from fire department to police department to fire department to police department during the whole snowstorm, so they can get in and out. So, it's kind of a critical piece of equipment as well.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thanks. All right, so now, so what do we do with this information? Great question, Mr. Mayor. All right, so, so counsel, you know, we got a lot of needs and I'm not looking for decisions tonight, but simply stated, what we did say was that we wanted to get back on the cycle of having a active capital improvements plan that was meaningful. I think some of the out-year projects, we're only looking at five. Obviously, I don't, I'm not even saying that we can do all of these, but I am saying that we can do some of these. I, I would like to refer a strategy down to a planning commission. And that strategy would be that items less than a hundred thousand dollars be kind of, you know, that's less than a penny of real estate tax, that, or a hundred and fifty thousand, maybe just take a penny of real estate tax and set those, those smaller costs up on that, like a pickup truck. truck. Here's one, the grader's one sixty-five, that would probably fit in with today. The mower replacement's a hundred and fifty. I'm just saying, and don't, don't remember the items that I'm talking about, remember the amount that I'm talking about. But to set a penny aside in the upcoming budget to handle the smaller volume costs. The ones that are, say, two hundred and fifty, or a hundred and fifty thousand and above, we've got to figure out whether they fit into a financing plan or, and up to one point three million dollars for the school replacement. We've got to come up with a, you know, where do they fit, and when do you do them in a, in a financing plan? That would be in conjunction with whatever we do with the schools, not instead of the schools, or, but in conjunction with them. And as far as the replacement of engine one oh two, I'm acceptable to move on and take, go ahead and get that on order and get, use the money from Messick to go ahead and get that one moving. But we can talk about that in detail at the next meeting. So what I really wanted to do tonight with council is basically say this. You got to think about this, and you got to start thinking about it hard. It's the hardest thing that we're going to do is this right here, along with the school replacement study. So you've got to, as a council here, we've got to decide, you know, how we're going to pay for it, whether it's going to be with, you know, it's going to be with increased dollars. Now, I don't know if those increased dollars are going to come from growth of the budget, or if they're going to come from increased tax, or if they're going to, what they're going to come from. But they've got to start, this list needs to start going down. And we're going to have to address City Hall Avenue, City Hall's air conditioning system before summer, before summer. We need to do that. And that's, that's for all of our citizens. It doesn't matter whether you use the library, or you use the Commissioner of Revenue's office, and it's vital to our employees. But next meeting, not only are we going to talk about the farm animal ordinance, but I would like to come back with a discussion on how council wants to direct the planning commission to line these things up. Is that okay?
Absolutely, I'll be gone that next meeting.
Mr. Mayor?
With the lead time, go ahead, Tom.
And to, can we, I mean, this is an extensive list of cost, and, you know, I'm, I'm looking at this, and unfortunately, we're in a position to make the tough decisions, because that's what we wanted to do. And unfortunately, things like three hundred and ten thousand dollars for light replacements are not going to be prioritized as high as, like you were saying, this HVAC in City Hall or replacement of engine one oh two. So could we ask the department heads to go through this list and compile, not necessarily by cost, but what is their most immediate need in the next year or two? What is the most important need for their departments and for the citizens?
Sure, absolutely.
All right, that's fine.
I was just going to say with the lead time that our building inspector projected that before next summer is like right now?
Yes, it is. So even if we have to do something shorter term
Okay.
Financing.
Okay.
But we'll, we'll figure, we'll factor that in, but I just don't, if these things go, were to go down hard, right, which is always possible, if they go down hard, then we don't have a City Hall. Okay, so we've got to, we need to address that one. And I, I did see it last summer, and I didn't, I didn't like it, so with the little portable air conditioner running everywhere.
We're still running.
If anyone would like to see them, I'll take care of the terrain.
And we're getting, ready to transition to portable heaters.
Big hose, hoses.
So whatever we got to do to, to move that one up and post haste with the mine and minerals, whatever we can do to motivate them, not saying you can't, but.
If we want, not speaking for Ann, but I think I can speak for us as staff, if the council is interested in moving something that quickly, we're probably going to need to bypass that process, because there's no way we're going to get that done in, in the ground or on the roof in six or seven months, because there's, they don't even, they don't even have their vendors.
So here, so here, so here's the question, can you, can you do it and get a payback on the grant?
No.
Okay.
But we certainly can do it, being mindful of the fact that we would hopefully have some energy savings that will help us pay for it.
Right, right, agree with that.
We can take the, the concepts and apply them, even if it's not the state's program.
Okay, fair enough. All right, but anyway, like I said, I want to address this. I really want to set in the, in the next two to three years, the city on a track that it, you know, we, we've done a good job as council with finances of the city when times were tight. I'm not saying times aren't still tight, they still are, right? But I would like to get the city on a track where it's taking care of its vehicles and its personnel and all of those things in the, in the coming three years. And I want to do, I think we are going to grow. So it's not all negative in that it all has to come out of more taxes on existing. We do have some growth. So I'm excited to see that, I'm excited to see other things come online as well in the near future, I hope. But those are the things that I'm counting on to pay for this program, okay? So I want to keep an open mind about it, but I want to get one stood up for the city to actually follow. It would be the first time in my twenty-four years on this council, or twenty years now, but it'd be twenty-four by the time that it's over, that we would have had one, okay? And that's why it's so important to me. It's, it's something that we've always, well, we've got to spare three hundred thousand dollars, which is our highest need in all of our stuff. And that's why the decision's harder now, because you have more to address, instead of addressing it all along. So that's, that's my goal for this council, and I just want to set that high goal. So you ready to talk about it next week? Randy won't be here, fortunately for us, so we'll just get to argue amongst ourselves, okay?
And just to be clear, we're going to discuss the replacement of engine eleven at our next meeting, along with the farm animal, mower ordinances and the other.
We're going to talk about the whole, what to send down.
What we just talked about.
You know, rather, I think the following meeting, whether we want to set in place an order for an engine or something like that. Okay, let's talk about the, the plan itself, and then, you know, what makes, right, okay?
Mr. Mayor, in the essence of time, could we possibly give Ms. Payne the go-ahead tonight to get the wheels in motion for the HVAC for City Hall?
Councilman, in addition to the procurement issue, we can start the procurement issues, we'll do that.
Okay.
But we're going to have to secure
A funding.
Short-term financing, if nothing else, at a time where regarding our, our credit rating and other things, so we're going to need a little bit of time to figure out what is the best way to do that.
Yep.
But we'll, we will begin in earnest in the morning.
Begin in earnest, and like I said, listening to what you listened to from Davenport the other day, and listening to the fact that, you know, it's not all, doesn't all have to be done in, in one fail swoop, in fact, they kind of talked about two, right? That you may start kicking into that, that thought process. And Jana, we want to get you that brief, right? So if you can set that up, Randy.
And we, are, are they still going to pursue the Department of Mines and Minerals?
Yeah, well.
We're still going to do that, or we don't have time to do that?
Doesn't sound like, doesn't sound like you can do that before.
If the goal is to be complete before summer, we're going to have to, I, I don't think, I don't think we can meet the goal with that process. I don't, I'm not sure we can meet it with any process, to be, to be honest, but we can certainly try, try, okay?
Gene?
Yes?
Well, before we break up, I'd like to make a few comments, and this is probably not the real appropriate time to make them, but I think they need, they need to be made. We haven't had the CIP programs, and we just plain haven't had the money. We know where the funds have to come from, and it's from a taxpayer, and primarily in our city homeowners. Now, I, I'm praying for the proper growth of our city, and that the EDA will be successful in bringing us some business in the city to help the homeowners out when it comes to paying the city's bills. And Randy already alluded to the fact we may have to use our credit cards, and we talked last week about various financing options. And so what I want to mention is something that I know it's way down the field and it's way out of the ballpark, but as we planned the CIP programs, I, I had a citizen come up and, and talk to me this past week, Mr. Tom Freeman, he's here tonight visiting, and he had some comments that were along the lines of some that you and I have had, and I think I've had some comments with Randy about things that we might plan for the city to help us, make us more flood resilient. He brought me some videos that were, that were presented, and it showed some of the things that NASA had to do with flooding events down there in Alabama, its Dennis Spaceflight Center, when Katrina came in and had that major flooding event there. We, we had our little share of that in Isabel. And so, you know, I've talked to you about various projects we might think about trying to keep flooding out of the center of the city, and he came up with some, some projects. He said, wouldn't it be nice to have a dike around the city of Pecosa and just to keep floodwaters out? And it would be, but, you know, when we talk about the borders of Pecosa, and those are lands that we don't own, and for the city to plan the projects on private property, that's a difficult thing to do. But, but he offered his services to help any committee that might want to work on ways that we might make our city more flood resilient, and if we can have some out-year projects, and again, I know we don't have funding for that now, but to make a city more flood resilient, to try to keep floodwaters out of Pecosa, and maybe there's, there's a way to plan something like that that would be innovative, maybe get some federal state funding. And so I, I wanted to pass that on so that it didn't, didn't get forgotten, and I think that's something that, you know, that we might think about for the out-years. It has the potential of saving the city many millions of dollars, should we be successful in being able to do that.
I agree. I can't argue with that at all, so I think that's a good plan. Maybe what we can do, Randy, is if we find those, you can put it in the Chesapeake Bay TMDL Stormwater Inspection Bucket.
I would, we're always looking for ways.
Right.
And Councilman Southall hit a number of the things that sort of prop up, pop up first. The fact that we have a largely absent and uncooperative home, or landowner in the federal government. We suggested, in fact, finger ridges and other things to protect the integrity of plum tree. They failed to include that in their conservation plan. In fact, they failed to, to include really anything that protects
A conservation plan.
Their conservation plan.
They don't have a conservation plan.
There are issues of private, of private property rights, there are issues, obviously, of financing, but there've got to be solutions that are out there, and I think that until we have the market cornered on the great ideas, which will never happen in an evolving situation like this, we need to be receptive to any ideas people have, because the, the perfect solution has not manifested itself yet, so I look forward to seeing, seeing the information the citizen provided, and, and anybody else as well.
Anything else? Good meeting. Hard work. All right, so we'll close the work session and see y'all in a couple weeks, talk to you before then. Thanks.